Islam, 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 we are here, we are here, we are here for thirty minutes more or less. Welcome to our Sabbath study sessions where we gather not just in search of knowledge, but in pursuit of truth, our truth, as we navigate through history, identity and legacy. We're here to illuminate the path from being labeled, from self-identifying, from black, African-American BIPOC, FBA, fill in the blank, to our rightful name of Moorish Americans, while getting our divine and national affairs in order. Alright, powered by your questions and our shared thirst for understanding, today's session dives into who's a Moor and who is not, from a mother's perspective, and why and how we should reclaim, protect and limit access to the name our forefathers and foremothers chose for us. It's more than a name, it's our heritage, our identity, our pride. It anchors us to a place in history, a place that puts all the other nations into positions of indebtedness. But before we get into all of that, we're going to cover updates and some questions. Alright, updates, the power of a Moor campaign. Gratitude for all the encouragement and positive energy that's been sent to Mercy Charities Way. It's been leading, I guess, I want to say leading, but it's been more like pushing Mercy Charities into all sorts of opportunities. Grant opportunities are being posted as, once it's secured law willing, we would much rather hire Moorish businesses to do any work that's required by that grant, right? That being said, if you are a Moorish business or interested in becoming one, please visit the link in the comments to sign up for our certified Moorish Business Contact List, or if you wish to volunteer your talent, you don't necessarily have a business set up yet, please see the "Join Us" link also in the comments below. And gratitude for your indulgence. Now let's get started on this study session, Islam. Oh wait, before I forget, we did actually get one question. This was directed to Khalifa Media, alright. Got an email question, it says, "Islam to the staff at Khalifa Media, I have a question about banking. How were you able to set up a business account with a bank without having an SSN or a state-issued ID? I'm trying to set up a temple account in my area and the banks and credit unions want a driver's license or state ID. Can you help with this problem? And could you please provide donation amount for this service?" Alright, let's answer that, starting from the back. There is no donation amount required, I'm just gonna let you know for free, if you wish to make a donation anyway, you can Cash App, Mercy Charities, PayPal slash, what is it, paypal.me/mercycharities, or go onto the website at mercycharities.org if you want to make a donation. But, we actually covered this in another study session on consecrating your business. Alright, so I'm not gonna go into that because I'll put the video up here somewhere, but as far as how was I able to open business accounts, uh, bank, business bank accounts without having a social, social, uh, social security number or state-issued ID? I never said I did that without a social security number or state-issued ID. Uh, let's not presume, okay? I used my social security number and a state-issued ID, because as I covered in the consecration video, all of this is about to come into our hands anyway, right? Again, when all those other colonized nations kicked out their colonists, did they completely destroy and get rid of the government that was in place? Or did they just replace the people and keep the structure? So, um, I'm sure there's probably ways to get around that, which take more time than just using what you actually already have. You know, not to say you scared or nothing, I wouldn't say that, you're being cautious, which is good. But I will say, um, all the other nations are here using social security numbers and state-issued IDs to get business done. And if they haven't issued, they whip out that nationality, no problem. Let's look at the, uh, who is that? The, um, these migrants, they're calling them migrants, but these people saying straight up, nah, we coming over here to get on welfare. How y'all been over here three months and ain't none of y'all got jobs? Y'all did not come over here to work. Anyway, the fact that they're not moving against those people, the way they move against black people, if you don't know why, it's because they have nationalities. They gotta deal with those peoples a certain way, even though they're breaking laws, but so are the people who might deal with them a certain way. Y'all ain't supposed to be here either. But I digress, so there's that answer. Um, again, there may be ways to obtain business accounts without using your straw stuff, but go, I don't, I don't know where it is. I've heard of it, right? And I know it's lengthy, and that, uh, you're gonna have to try it at a few places, because they go, most of them will tell you no. And good luck with that search. In the meantime, you could just use what you actually have in your possession, and as long as you proclaim that you're a Moor, right? You don't have to put it on paper, it works if you do, but Chinese people is like, I'm Chinese. What do they have to do to prove that? Okay, so you can use your stuff to get business done, alright? Um, and I think that answers that. Yeah. And as far as setting up a temple account, I would get in touch with a temple. Khalifa Media is a publishing company, not a temple. Mercy Charities is a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit organization, not a temple. So if you want to know how temples get their business done, I would suggest you contact a temple. And with that, alright, that covers the updates and the questions. Now we can get into, uh, we'll start with definitions, as usual, right? Because I'm gonna talk about Moors and Muslims, right? Again, from a mother's perspective, and as usual, I'm going to start with definitions, so that as we proceed, as we progress, we're all on the same page as far as words, the words I will be using. Okay, let's go over some definitions. We've already covered nationality more than once in more than a few places, uh, so I'm not gonna go into that again. Uh, so instead, we're going to examine the definitions of the terms that people tend to lean towards. Instead of referring to nationality, they use these words instead, alright? Especially black people, because you know, again, most people when pressed hard enough, they will come up with nationality and start dealing with you on that level. So, the, um, instead of nationality, what people usually bring up, especially in colonized states or nations, what people usually bring up are race, what is it, race, culture and ethnicity. And they're, they're misdefining or defining them, those words incorrectly as well. I hear it all the time, right? Uh, so just to make sure we're working using the same definition, I'm going to open up some dictionaries. I'm not using my interpretation or what I think it means. I'm gonna open up some dictionaries and find out how, like if I was to go into court to write up a contract, how might this be brought up in a court of law type of thing? So, let's start with race. From the Blacks Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition, "Race: An Ethnical Stock, A Great Division of Mankind Having in Common Certain Distinguishing Physical Specialities Constituting a Comprehensive Class Appearing to Be Derived From a Distinct Primitive Source. A Tribal or National Stock, A Division or Subdivision of One of the Great Racial Stocks of Mankind Distinguished by Minor Specialities." And then it goes into the case citing. Uh, then I looked into race, because I did not see culture or ethnicity or a couple of the other words I wanted to look into in the legal dictionary, dictionary, so I jumped over to my Webster's Unabridged Dictionary, 1955, okay? So, race, this was kind of lengthy, right? It actually had a few of them, but I'm only gonna read like, uh, there was this race noun, and then race adjective. I'm gonna give you two guesses who the adjective is speaking about, but let's look at race noun from the Webster's Unabridged Dictionary, alright? Um, let's see, first definition, A, okay, this is going, this gonna be involved, A, "Any of the major biological divisions of mankind distinguished by color and texture of hair, color of skin and eyes, stature, bodily proportions, etc. Many ethnologists now consider that there are, there are only three primary divisions. Moors, you know, there's only one race, the human race, and if you're not part of that, then you're not human." Anyway, these people came up with the Caucasian, uh, loosely white race, okay? Negroide, loosely black race, so that's, they're not white or black, right? And Mongoloid, loosely yellow race. Each with various subdivisions, the term has now acquired so many unscientific connotations that in this sense, it is often replaced in scientific usage by ethnic stock or group. And then, um, B of the first definition is mankind, okay? Not man, mankind. But I'm not about to touch that right now. Anyway, second definition, "Of Race: A Population That Differs From Others in the Relative Frequency of Some Gene or Genes," a modern scientific use. Alright. Three, "Any Geographical, National or Tribal Ethnic Groups," or grouping, okay? Four, A, "The State of Belonging to a Certain Ethnic Stock, Group, etc." For B, "The Qualities, Traits, etc. Belonging to or supposedly belonging to such a division." Five, "Any Group of People Having the Same Activities, Habits, Ideas, etc. As the Race of Dramatist." Let me read that one again. Five, "Any Group of People Having the Same Activities, Habits, Ideas, etc. As the Race of Dramatist." Alright, that's gonna come up. Six, "A Group of People Having a Common Parentage, The Descendants Collectively of a Common Ancestry, Family, Clan." Seven, seven A, "A Breed, A Stock, A Large Division or Class, The Species, The Genera Of Which Are Traceable to a Common Origin," B, or seven B, "In Zoology, A Subspecies or Variety." Eight, "Characteristic Strength or Flavor Indicating the Origin of Some Natural Product As the Race of a Wine." Oh, I never knew about that. And then it has in brackets, rare. And synonyms of race are breed, family, nation, people and tribe, right? That was the, the race, the noun, the definition of the noun race, but it also, if you continue to the top of the same page in the next column, it had a definition of the adjective race. Did you have time to figure out who the adjective refers to? Well, here you go. Race adjective, one, "A Recent Origin With Euphemistic Intent," Negro. And the second definition is racial, right? And I'm like, euphemistic, let me not just assume I know what that means. Let me look up euphemism, right? So it says, "Race adjective," you know, because that describes people who, you don't have a nationality noun, so I have to describe, I have to speak in you, speak of you in descriptives, okay? That's basically what it's saying, right? So it's saying, "Of recent origin with euphemistic intent," euphemism, alright? "The Use of an Auspicious Word for an Inauspicious One," from euphemizing, euphemizing, "To use a good or auspicious word for an evil or inauspicious," from euphemos, "Of good sound or omen, you, good and feemy voice from, what is that, for nigh to speak." One, so that was the etymology of it, so the first definition, "The Use of a Word or Phrase That is Less Expressive or Direct But Is Considered Less Distasteful, Less Offensive, etc. Than Another. A Word or Phrase So Substituted As She Is At Rest Is a Euphemism For She Is Dead." Is that not perfect for black folks? I'm just saying. Um, yeah, because you're dead, black, if you're a black person, you are dead in the eyes of the law. So if you're wondering, again, bringing up these migrants, I don't, I can't really, I don't consider them illegals. I'm gonna get into that, why. Um, but if you're wondering if black folks listening, if you're wondering why they're getting more consideration than you, it's because, um, they're not dead in the eyes of the law. They can actually wave a flag. You ain't got no flag. They got an embassy, you don't, right? You cannot claim the United States because you see how they treat you, whatever. So anyway, next definition. So we covered, we already looked at nationality a while back, um, and now we're using what most people use instead of nationality, race, culture and ethnicity, right? So we covered race and found out as far as black folks concerned, it's a euphemism. That's hilarious, right? So, culture, right? Again, this is still from the Webster's Dictionary, Unabridged Dictionary. I'm just gonna skip over the etymology, you can see it there yourself. Says, number one, "The Act of or Process of Tilling and Preparing the Earth for Crops, Cultivation of Soil," okay? That soil part, you know, what did Allah make man out of? Two, "The Raising, Improvement or Development of Some Plant, Animal or Product." Three, "The Growth of, the Growth of Bacteria, Bacteria or Other Microorganisms in a Specially Prepared Nourishing Substance Such as Agar," or "A Colony of Microorganisms Thus Grown." So that's culture, okay? Fifth definition of culture, "Improvement, Refinement or Development by Study, Training, etc." Six, "The Training and Refining of the Mind, Emotions, Manners, Tastes, etc." I cultivate my children. How do I do that? Let me, we're gonna get into that, right? Um, so again, six, the sixth definition of culture, "The Training and Refining of the Mind, Emotions, Manners, Tastes, etc." Seven, "The Result of This, Refinement of Thought, Emotions, Manners, Tastes, etc." The concept, uh, eighth definition, "The Concepts, Habits, Skills, Art, Instruments, Institutions, etc. of a Given People in a Given Period Civilization," right? And then it says cultured, as in the verb cultures, culturing, to cultivate, to refine, to educate, to grow, to prepare specifically in a prepared medium. Okay. And the next one that people use a lot instead of nationality, ethnicity. I got a kick out of this one. I wish, it's kind of funny I didn't. I found race in the law dictionary, but not culture and not ethnicity. I'm gonna have to look into that some more, get back to y'all. Anyway, so ethnicity in the Webster's Unabridged. I did not find ethnicity, but I did find ethnic. It's a noun. It means a heathen, a pagan, alright? Do with that what you will, right? And then it goes into the next definition, ethnic and ethnicole, as far as the adjectives. I'm skipping the etymology, you can see it there yourself. It means, first definition of ethnic adjective, heathen, pagan, pertaining to nations or groups neither Christian nor Jewish. Second definition, designating or, wait, yeah, designating or of any of the basic divisions or groups of mankind as distinguished by customs, characteristics, language, etc., etc., ethnological, okay? And then it goes into some more ethnotypes, alright? Another couple of definitions, just two more that will come up as we proceed through this discussion, right? Islam, and thank y'all for joining. Make sure you like, share, subscribe, tell all your friends, because there's some good stuff. We need to get our minds right, so we get our stuff right. Anyway, morals, morals, okay? Adjective, pertaining to manners or morals from moose, mores, manner, plural, mores, manners or morals, as they are, that's the etymology. First definition, relating to, dealing with or capable of making the distinction between right and wrong in conduct. Two, relating to serving to teach or in accordance with the principles of right and wrong. Three, good or right in conduct or character, often specifically virtuous in sexual conduct opposed to immoral, okay? Um, four, based on general observation of people, etc., rather than on what is demonstrable as moral evidence. Five, designating support, etc., that involves approval and sympathy without action. Hmm. Six, being virtual, being virtually such because of its effect, one, wait, being virtually such because of its effects on thoughts, attitudes, etc., or because of its general results as a moral victory. Seven, based on strong probability as a moral certainty. Eight, moralizing, but apparently that's a rare usage, alright? Moral philosophy, also known as ethics. Moral theology, which is theology in its relation to ethics. Moral, okay? Synonyms, righteous, ethical, probable, influential, presumptive, virtuous, well-conducted. And then the noun of moral, the practical lessons inculcated by any story or incident, the significance or meaning as of a fable. Second definition, a maxim, you know, those things you just know because it's written on your heart, right? You don't have to write it down in law. Uh, third definition is principles and practice in regard to right and wrong and duty, ethics, general conduct or behavior, especially in sexual matters, alright? And the last definition, mores. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. It's like, I first heard it in a psychology course. Mores. I'm just, I mean, you don't know why I'm bringing up morals and mores. I can't help you. You know, you'll get there. I, I, I think you'll, those who don't understand where I'm getting, where I'm getting with these or where I'm going with those two words, I have confidence that you'll figure it out. Anyway, mores, right? Singular, um, folkways that are considered conducive to the welfare of society. And so, through general observance, develop the force of law, often becoming part of the formal legal code, alright? And then I just thought it was kind of cool, the two definitions after that were, uh, the adjective and noun, uh, forms of moresque. Islam, so those are our definitions. Now let's get into the meat of this. Yep, I'm probably about to make some enemies with this one, but being a student of history and a keen observer of present day, there are some enemies I don't mind having, and that has nothing to do with your nationality, race, culture or ethnicity. It has everything to do with not being able to accept facts, okay? You know, that cognitive dissonance, I don't have the patience for it, I just won't deal with it. Anyway, having given that disclaimer, you know, I've been seeing some wild stuff over the past week, right? Like, I don't know if y'all have seen Caucasian, Caucasian preachers are so-called teaching blacks, that they're the true Israel, you know? But there are, these same Caucasians are saying, well, since we teaching you niggas that you're black, or that you're not black, you're Israelite, that makes us Israelites too. It's really, it's really funny, right? And I, it just, what, the part that surprises me isn't that these people are, have the arrogance to do some stuff like that, like, we coming out of this 400 years with y'all, we suffered too. That's not the part that's, that's interesting. The part that's really interesting is that they have an audience of so-called black folks sitting there listening to this. But anyway, so, um, having seen some stuff like that and encountered some other things, maybe I'll touch on, I felt pulled to address this, right? So let's start with a fundamental truth, okay? You are what your mother is, alright? This principle isn't just biblical, and it's not just conjecture. It's a universal truth grounded in natural law, okay? Because I know, I, I know I have some Hebrew Israelite brethren, welcome, welcome, you're most welcome, who insist that, um, you know, it's all based on the Father, right? You really do need to get a hold of, what's the name of this book? I'm about to pull it out right now, if I can find it. Um, I can't, oh, here it is, yes. "The Sybils, The First Prophetesses of Mommy," and read like the first chapter and introduction, it'll set you straight as far as, uh, where that came from, as far as, you know, everybody trying to, trying to force people to trace themselves through a patrilineal line, even though we're, the only thing you can know for sure is your mother, right? But let me not tangent or anything. Um, again, this isn't just biblical or conjecture, it's grounded in natural law, right? First, "Since the Beginning of Time, Men Do Not Know They Are Father Until a Woman Tells Them." So how are you in charge? How are you in control of that, right? That's really interesting. Back to the biblical part, because we all working off these scriptures, um, and, but I'm not adhering to scripture, I'm just using scripture because it's a lot of common sense. Or what do they, what's another word for common sense? Mother wit? Anyway, it's a lot of common sense up in there. Like how with the Israelites, they say, "Don't marry women outside of your father's tribe." Why is that not a requirement for the women? Alright, and you can see that it's not a requirement for the women, because look at Esther, right? True indeed, the king didn't know she was an Israelite, but her guardian did, and he let her marry a non-Israelite anyway. And there's a few more examples of our women marrying out, but the men having nothing but issues when they do it, right? And I'm getting into why, right? And then like spring up the fact that until the 20th, until the end of the 20th century, the father was never assured, right? Ever. Even if you, we got a blood test, you do know the guy that, the postman got your same blood type. That's why those weren't reliable either, right? So until the late 20th century, when they finally brought out DNA test, that's when you know, your father could actually make some assured claims on you, right? Except in the cases of confinement of the mother before, during and after conception. If y'all wondering why, where harems came from all over the world. How to make sure that these are my children. Mom don't have that issue, right? But it's so funny, because you know, again, you are what your mother is, because unfortunately, sometimes even the mother doesn't know who the father is. Did not Maury Povich make a whole career proving this, right? And again, it's never disputed. Who, your father can be disputed all day and all night until somebody takes a test. Your mother is never disputed unless it's like, okay, you got adopted out and the paperwork got messed up, right? Otherwise, somebody saw you come out of her, you're her child. You are what your mother is without, haha, without doubt or contradiction. Anyway, in the past, our identities were clear, right? Very clear. I actually appreciate anti-misogynization laws. It's kind of, I might have to get into that, had I was kind of them, I don't know if they meant to do it, but it was kind of them doing us a favor, preserving the last bit of the Moorish nation, right? What do you mean, what last bit? Um, well, let's see. In the past, our identities were clear, right? Unclothed by terms imposed on us, and today we're trying to get back to that clarity, right? Back in the day, you knew what a Moor was and you knew what a Moor looked like, right? Um, but now it's, it's not so clear. But I'll touch on the anti-misogynization part again in just a moment. For centuries, our lineage, our identity was unmistakable. We were the Moors. So well-known were our exploits that the very oceans were named after us. The introduction of terms like black and African-American has clouded this clarity. This presented the ideal opportunity for our enemies to swap their abominable history, right? Slave, you mean like Slav, as in Slavic? They come from over there, so how did we end up with that name? They- They swapped their abominable, abominable history with our legacy of greatness. How many of you are aware that public schools once taught that caucus Asians taught the world how to bathe? Yeah. And how did they do this? They solidified it the same we did. Wait, um, we did. Our people did it through harems. They did it through rape babies. And let's get, let's consider Latin America in this respect, and this goes back to the anti-misogynization laws that I said I appreciate it, right? Because were it not for those anti-misogynization laws, uh, the remaining central part of North America would be, it would look just like Central and South America, alright? It's uncontested that the original inhabitants of South and Central America were Moorish, like those Aztec heads. How did we end up with all these people that look like, look more like the harem babies of Spain than those original Moors? Through the very same, or at least similar process carried out by the Moors in Europe. The males of a colonizing nation made it with the women of the nation they were colonizing, happens, right? History teaches that those children were recognized as neither indigenous nor colonial, right? But a third separate thing, as they would never be fully recognized or accepted by either of their parents' people, right? Parents might be cool. What about their people, right? In the case of Iberia, this resulted in Spaniards from willing caucus Asian mothers residing in opulent Moorish harems, right? And in the case of the indigenous Moors of America. My Latino or whatever, I don't know, um, cuz it's so much confusion going on. I'm just saying Latino and Latinx for lack of a better term. I do not mean to offend anyone, anyone, so there you go. Uh, but for lack of a better, better term, right? In the case of the indigenous Moors of America, these are the rape babies forced on the Moorish women by the sons of the colonizing brethren in Spain. If that's not the wildest thing. So yeah, our men went over there and got loose in the pants with uh whereas daughters and then their children, their sons, you know, operating off of their mother's energy, came over here and imposed themselves upon the women over here, and that's how you got Latin America, alright? If you don't believe me, put a Spaniard and a Latino together and see if you can tell the difference. Anyway. Um, so now we have the modern version of that, right? Here comes Becky tricking with self-hating traitorous Tyrone to produce all these confused tragic mulatos. And how opportune, yeah, I'm about to get real cuz I'm getting sick of this cuz I keep, these people keep coming in my face, right? How opportune, considering the writing on the wall, it, the writing is on the wall insofar as who's about to get majorly hooked up with Allah's blessings and who's about to be in a whole world of pain, alright? And as taught, y'all know my history. If you've been listening to me for any, any amount of time, you already know where I get this attitude from. But I'm gonna tell you, those of, those of y'all who don't, I'm gonna give y'all a little clue. As taught by the late and not so great Elijah Poole Bay, some of y'all might know him as Elijah Muhammad. The last trick of the devil is his woman, alright? Thank goodness, I was raised to be a problem for those women and their children, acting to protect the interests of the women and children of my nation. Since, you know, unfortunately, the brothers are, are way too quick to like give out love to anybody and allow, and basically letting anybody into the bloodline. Which I wonder if that's why Allah gave that to us to protect. He gave it to the women to protect, right? Or Allah is not a he or she, it's just Allah, right? So it's just, I just find it interesting that, uh, like I said, it's only coming up because I've been encountering it. And so, yeah, please, I guess you, you're being uh imposed upon with my rant to, to relieve me, to, to basically let off some steam because I was about to snap on some people that I assume are children, alright? But anyway, maybe they'll see this message and know, no, you need to sit down somewhere, alright? For real. Um, it's, and yeah, uh, unfortunately, I am only talking to Becky's babies, alright? Cuz the same women that produced these colonists that are giving us all these headaches, I don't see you as any different just because you have a tan, because your father gay, let you into the bloodline, but didn't give you none of the tools to activate or apply it, right? None of it, right? Who they lead that to? They lead that to the women of our, of the nation that they abandoned, right? Those times are done, right? Many may not remember that not too long ago, mothers instructed their sons, and yes, this is a warning, a threat, whatever you wanna call it. If she can't use your comb, don't bring her home, right? Many of us, including me, also remember that uncle that was always missing from reunions and cookouts because of who he tried to shoehorn into the family. I'm just saying, right? This is not an attack on non-Moors, alright? It's an acknowledgement, a disclosure, if you will, that I will not try to assume, I promise. My, me personally, I promise I will not try to assume the identity of a, of people that I do not belong to. Nor will I tolerate the continuance of people trying to do the same thing with my nationality now that I know who I am, right? Those who are aligned with the Moors while not being of that bloodline, you know, your mother, are you the child of a Moorish daughter's Moorish daughter? That's what I'm asking, right? Um, those who are aligned, if you're not, you're aligned with the Moors. So even though you're not part of the bloodline, you do have a place in our community. They are, these people are our beloved and most welcome, Mos- Muslim brethren and sisterin. Just as scripture outlines the dealings between Jews and Gentiles, today this is being translated into the dealings between Moors and Muslims. While you may not be of us genetically, you are definitely of us spiritually, right? Um, this is not my personal opinion or feeling. This is what I've read in, in numerous scripture, right? And it, it, it resonates with my spirit. I don't hate on anybody, right? I, I'm just gonna keep going, right? Um, the issues arise when Muslims attempt to abandon the nationality gifted by their mothers. As a mother, I, I don't, I don't appreciate that. So they, they, you're trying, this is the issue I'm seeing. You're a Muslim. You, you down with the Moors? You're more sincere than these brown people who's supposed to be acting like Moors, right? You're more sincere than them, right? But you're not a Moor, right? And it's not cool that you're trying to abandon the nationality gifted by your mother so that you might assume the nationality of another people, right? This is no different than the colonists that helped us into this position in the first place. That's offensive to the Moors. It's offensive to your mother. It's not cool. It's not allowed. It's okay to be a Muslim, right? Why does it matter who your mother is? It's about more than the semantics. It's about reclaiming our power, our history and our future. The men of a nation establish culture, the women transmit it. The women of our nation carry the legacy of our foremothers, bridging past and present. When we identify as Moorish Americans, we honor that legacy. It is not something to be given away just based on skin color, nor at least in the case of the matrilineal Moorish culture based on paternity. But back to culture, okay? When Tyrone has a baby with Becky, does Tyrone take it upon himself to instruct Becky on the intricacies of so-called black child reary? Cuz you know, that's, that's, that's a whole involved process, right? Or does he leave her to apply what she's learned from her people? These are just questions. Most sisters, those born to Moorish mothers with Moorish mothers, are familiar with the mixed chick bun that leads to an offer to assist women who have no idea what to do with their own children's hair. Then their skincare, melanated children's need for sun exposure. Among other details, the fathers take for granted and assume that the mothers know. At least the mothers of their own people know. Again, it usually falls to the women of Tyrone's community to make up for the knowledge lacking in this foreign woman that he chose. Now let's consider the impact of external influences on our culture by people claiming to be of our former misnomer nation black, right? They dress like us, sound like us, and to some extent, look like us. But more often than not, they lead our youth to act contrary to our better moral nature, alright? I'm a, let's look at a couple of examples. Who are the biggest tramps out there leading our girls astray? They're all mixed, alright? I ain't got nothing against mixed chicks. I just happen to see, I know a saboteur when, but it looks like a saboteur, right? It's one thing when you are of a nation and you acting up, tearing down your own stuff. It's another thing when somebody sends a plant in that looks like you to do it, alright? Um, so yeah, one, both are bad, but one is definitely bet worse than the other, Islam. In our journey towards self-identification, it's crucial we stand firm in our truth. As Moorish Americans, our identity is deeply rooted in our history, our beliefs and our culture. This isn't about exclusion, but about profound inclusion in the legacy our ancestors paid for us. If you aren't my enemy yet, you might be after this, okay? Fair disclosure, fair warning, full disclosure, okay? Not every dark-skinned person is a Moor. If they were, wouldn't they be calling themselves Moors? Some would argue, well, they don't know it any better because they're still operating off a colonial construct, struck, okay? I would argue that if they have enough sense to set up and run a sovereign government within that construct, construct, admittedly colonial, and they know that they, who the Moors are, you know, just because they erased the history over here doesn't mean they erased it everywhere. Why don't they choose to set up these governments as Moors? The Tamil Moors are proof that if you are a Moor, you can set up and be recognized as a legitimate government as a Moor, right? Those who insist that all dark-skinned people are Moors are no better than the colonists who insist they knew who we were, right? They went, they get, they went around telling us who, who we are. They still do that, going around telling people who they are. And they went about imposing their names upon us despite our possession of a self-determined national name. So people saying, oh, the Arabs are Moors, so why aren't they calling themselves Moors? The name been there the whole time, but they ain't been using it. So I'm gonna go on posit that they're not Moors, you know, and here's why. Unfortunately, those who tend to engage in this behavior tend to be the ones that have not been ordained by Allah to pass on nationality, i.e. their guise. As the daughter of a long line of Moorish daughters and the mother of two Moorish daughters, I will protect their interests to the, with the utmost of my ability, and I don't mind being cruel in this execution. No different than that of any other nation. What happens when that child is of a hybrid? Now, I'm not gonna have, call them a hybrid. They're a hybrid, right? Of two distinct nations, right? I'll leave that to you to answer for yourself. But my thing is Moms Nation, get into it, and they'll go start beefing with Dad's Nation, who army you about to join? That's why you don't do that stuff, alright? And a last note on this issue, unless you were calling yourself by an imposed byword, right? Whatever you were in twenty twenty nationality-wise, please stay there. The Moors are about to be redeemed. This goes back to like, okay, why are these people not calling themselves Moors? Stop telling them they are because you're invite, you're inviting all of these people who have no right to our, what we bout to get, you're inviting them right in to get their slice, and they been robbing us. Stop it, alright? So my thing is, whatever you were calling yourself pre-two thousand and twenty, or even today, starting today, right? Unless it was a name put on you, right? If you got a flag and a nation to call your own, you ain't, you're not included in this population in, from what I can see. Because the, the prophecies say that these will be a pe- the only people without a nation. There's only one group of people without their own nation, right? So anyway, um, the Moors are about to be redeemed, so please save yourself the time, energy and possible physical harm. And don't start claiming Moorish now that you see some materials to be gained, alright? It's time that we return to our rightful name, Moors, Moorish, Moorish America. Embracing the legacy left by our ancestors, right? I'm tired of this where all these people that, that, that hyphenated American, I'm coming after that one next. Cuz I'm sick of everybody having theirs and mine while we get nothing. So anyway, if you are not a child of a Moorish mother's Moorish daughter, you know, that children's children thing, this does not include you. Stay with your mother and her people. Islam, this message today is an invitation, not, you know, ragging on nobody, and it's not a demand. It's a call to those who feel the resonance of truth in their hearts, Moors and Muslims. To those who see themselves in the legacy of the Moors or the cleaving spirit of our Muslim brethren and sisterin. Scripture reminds us of the path ahead, and it's a path we choose with open hearts and awakened spirits. To our brothers and sisters, to the Gentiles, AKA Muslims, who support our awakening, you are an integral part of this journey. Together, as Moorish Americans, we stand on the brink of a new dawn, reclaiming our identity, our heritage, our rightful place in the narrative of history, Islam. So y'all be sure, you know, that's all I got. Y'all be sure to please share this video, engage with us in the comments and join us as we continue to uncover and celebrate our rich heritage. I'm going, I'm coming after mine, what's mine? I don't know what y'all gonna do. Please follow Khalifa Media at khalifamedia.com, on Instagram at Khalifa Media, Facebook Khalifa Media, and a few more places, I think, for more insights, discussions and revelations. Together, let's embrace our past to shape our future. Until next time, keep seeking, keep questioning, and above all, keep embracing your true identity. Thank you for watching. Thank you for your indulgence, and remember, your identity is your legacy. Peace, y'all, Islam, and bye-bye.